It may be. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017, City Council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and we'll be led in prayer by Pastor John Miles from the Pastoral Care at Prairie Lakes Hospital.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, Creator of heaven and earth, and of all living things, we acknowledge you as the source of all that is good. We thank you for the blessings of the past year, and for the promise of your continued care and guidance in this new year of 2017. We thank you for the past leaders of this community, especially, we remember tonight Ernie Edwards, whose passing we mourn and whose memory we honor. We can very well imagine your greeting to him in heaven. "Well done, well done, good and faithful servant." Welcome him into your eternal home, and bless his family and friends with comfort and fond memories. Guide those who are meeting here tonight. Give them wisdom, discernment, courage, humility, and respect for one another and for the people they serve. Bless them for their generosity and their willingness to put their talents into the service of their community. Above all, bless the city of Watertown. May we all be good citizens, kind neighbors, and faithful servants of you and of each other. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Shelley, would you do a roll call for us?
I can. Albertson's absent. Bueller? Danforth?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Reifenberg?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Philhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Pastor John, thanks for mentioning Ernie's family, that another huge loss for Watertown, and thanks for saying that. Okay, at this time, I'll look for a motion in a second for approval of our consent agenda. Motion by Bruce, second by Beth. Any concerns, any changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number two, approve the agenda. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by John. Any questions, changes? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, ordinance number 16-28, amending section 14.0209 regarding prohibited injury to public trees to clarify nuisance tree trimming requirements. This is the second reading of this, and Justin, I'll let you have some discussion for us in one second. Maybe I'll get a motion in a second, and then we'll buzz over to you. So I got a motion by Randy, second by Brad. Okay, if you want to take it on.
Thank you, Mayor. Will do. As reported in last, in our last city council meeting, ordinance 1628 merely tries to clarify the fact that abating the public nuisance known as trees, low-hanging trees, in the, in the public cross, or in the public sidewalks, would not run afoul of another ordinance, namely 140209, that prohibits the trimming of trees, public trees, within the public right-of-way and parks and parkways. So by dealing with the nuisance, you would not be triggering this tree injury ordinance. What we've discovered since then is that there are other city departments that also have an interest in this topic. And so what I have up on the projector here is a proposed amendment, which if one of the city council would be willing to motion to amend. This language here comes at the behest of municipal utilities. What I'm mentioning is the blue language here is the additional language. It reads, "Furthermore, this section does not apply to the Watertown Municipal Utilities and permitted telecommunications companies who trim or remove said trees or shrubs that interfere or may reasonably interfere with the safe and reliable operation of utility facilities and infrastructure." And just as it reads, the intention behind this is to exempt those utilities whose lines exist on poles that may be put in jeopardy by trees and shrubs that move up against it, that if a gust of wind came by, could potentially snap tree, snap the lines, snap the poles. So that is the rationale behind that language. And the phrase permitted telecommunications companies refers to the fact that these would be utility companies that have their lines on municipal utilities' poles, and are there with permission from municipal utilities. So if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So we're actually, you want an amended motion on that to include this, but do you want to vote on this tonight, or did you want to carry this one over to the following council meeting?
That's an excellent question, Mayor. If indeed the council chooses to amend the language as depicted here, then we would need to have a third hearing on this, on this particular ordinance.
Right. As you all know, they changed the rules on us just a little bit at the last municipal league, you know, in the legislature last year. So something that is this major of a change in any kind of ordinance, if you amend it, we must put that back on the next council meeting. So I would suggest we amend that and bring that back at the following meeting.
So Mayor, do you need a motion to do that, or is that something we're just going to?
Yes, we need a motion to amend this.
Okay, I would make the motion then, to amend it as suggested and as been read to the council.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have an amended motion by Mike, and second by Beth. Any questions on that? And you want us to vote upon that amendment? Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Justin. Then we'll bring that forward at the next meeting, and go through the third reading. Okay, whatever you want to do. All right.
Now, at the third reading, we can vote on it, right?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Maybe, unless you guys change it again. Yeah, the second saying. Okay, number four, ordinance number 16-29, amending section 14.0704 regarding inspection of Dutch elm disease infections. This is a second reading. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Mike was, Mike and Bill, second by Bill. Justin, if you want to kind of go through that for us?
Certainly, Mayor. I'm only putting this up here on the projector because the track changes version didn't make it into the agenda packet. And so what you see in the agenda packet is the changed version, or the proposed revision to the revised ordinances. This then depicts the changes. So anyways, as you recall from the last city council meeting, this proposed ordinance seeks to amend a section within our chapter on Dutch elm disease to ensure that the city has, retains the authority that it enjoys under current statute, or under current ordinance, but loses the rather outlandish duty that was imposed on it by ordinance to seemingly divine where all forms of Dutch elm disease, or all presences of Dutch elm disease in the community could be found. So if you have any further questions, please feel free to ask. I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Justin on this?
Mayor, do I want to make a motion on it first, so we can have discussion?
I think we've had the motion.
Do we have the motion, sir?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. We're looking for discussion.
I had sent Justin an email today, and my thinking is, is that we should have a blanket ordinance that deals with diseased trees, and not one for Dutch elm. And then 10 years from now, we'll create one for the ash borer, and then whatever else comes along. It seems like the issue is the ability to, to, you know, take Dutch elm out of here, and the ability to manage any perceived or determined disease of a, in this case, tree. So it seems like we're updating this when we really should be updating it specific to Dutch elm, and we really should be updating it to diseased trees, period.
I tend to agree. I think Justin and I had that conversation today, and I think you can do that with just a few words in there to get this done. Could you not?
Yes, you can, Mayor. There is another provision in that same title, Title 14, where that authority is granted in some respects to the city. This would expand it to cover all forms of disease.
Yeah, because I think we will be running into the ash borer and other things, and I think that would be a, we should do something beyond just the Dutch elm. I would agree.
Absolutely.
And I would disagree that we need to have the Dutch elm still here, because people can still bring that into the city, and you need to be able to inspect that. So how do you want to do that one? Do you want us to just table this then, and you bring it back to the next, the next meeting with some different language?
Whatever the council would prefer, this could be a simple stopgap measure, but it would take a matter of a few weeks of getting together with Jay, and really, you know, making sure that we've covered all of our bases, that we've, you know, created language that fits with exactly what you're thinking. So if you give us till the next city council meeting, we'll have something.
Typically, not this time of year, we're dealing with it anyhow, right?
You know, I think that might be a good question for Jay, but my understanding is, is that the, and Jay can certainly clarify, that the threat posed by Dutch elm disease has tapered some throughout the years.
But I mean, it's not typically the time of the year that we're out inspecting trees and cutting trees down and stuff, so we do have a couple of weeks to take a better look at it. And I agree with Mike. I mean, we might as well blanket the coverage and allow us to, you know, two years from now, it could be totally something different again, so.
That's very correct. It's a lot easier to inspect trees in the summer, winter, spring, and summer. And you know, the emerald ash borer, that's going to be a completely different animal than what the Dutch elm disease was, because what I've learned on that to this point in time is with the elm, one of the bad things that it does, it within a period of two or three years, makes them so brittle and unsafe that when emerald ash borer comes, you know, we're going to have to have immediate and quick action and get them down and out of there.
Okay, so let's, I think we should, we should do something with this. What do you want to do?
If you want to make a substitute motion to add language and bring it back for adoption, like you're going to do with 1628.
I would make that motion to change language in this and bring it back to either the next council meeting or two weeks, or four weeks.
So I have a motion by Randy.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any other questions? I think this is a good move, guys. So all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Number five, Police Department vehicle bids. We have a consideration of bids received for the Police Department vehicles. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Beth. You're up, Scotty.
Thank you. On December 10th and 17th, we advertised for bids for four sport utility vehicles for the Police Department. On December 23rd, we had bid opening, and out of the three bids that we received, Watertown Ford submitted the low bid for a 2017 Dodge Durango vehicle. So if there's any questions, I can try and answer them.
Any questions from anybody on this?
What, I'm sorry, what do we use now? What do we have typically? What do we use?
Right now, we have Ford Explorer SUVs, and then we also have a couple of Dodge Chargers. All-wheel-drive Dodge Chargers.
Is there a standardization issue?
That's what I was wondering.
There is. We prefer to drive one vehicle, one type of vehicle, but like I say, currently we do have the Dodge Chargers, and we have the Ford Explorers. This element will add kind of a third vehicle to our fleet. We currently don't, well, I should take that back. We do have one Dodge Durango that we had in 2008, but other than that, you know, we haven't had Dodge Durango as patrol vehicles. The fact is, is that these are about $2,000 cheaper. We will have to buy a new seat, plastic seat that we install, as well as a new partition barrier. So those costs will probably end up being close to that $2,000. So net savings in that case is basically zero. You know, I guess, at this point in time, we just went with the Dodge Durangos because they were the low bid, but Ford Explorers work as well.
Equipment transfer, or equipment that we currently have, and fitting it into the Dodge Durango? Is it pretty close from the Explorer to the Durango without a lot of noodling around, or is it a lot, we have to get new?
Yeah, I think most equipment will transfer over, except for that plastic seat, which is about $1,000, and then that partition between the driver and the, and the person that's in custody. Those run about $1,000. And then we believe that the light bar on top will, will be able to be reused. We may have to get some different brackets, but other than that, it should be able to be used.
Would the same apply to the Explorer? Would you still have to change out the seat and put the partition in?
We would on two of the four vehicles, because we're taking two Dodge Chargers out of service. So the equipment out of those vehicles isn't going to fit an Explorer or a Dodge Durango. But we're also taking two Ford Explorers out of service. So in that case, that equipment would fit right back into another Ford Explorer.
So that's what I'm getting at, is all in. If you're able to transfer equipment right to the Ford Explorers and have to ding, you know, monkey around with the Dodge Durangos and add seats and things like that, are we better off indeed spending the $2,000 extra for a Ford Explorer, where it's kind of a plug-and-play kind of thing with some of our equipment?
Essentially, it kind of becomes a wash, because like I say, if we go with the Dodge Durango, they're $2,000 cheaper. So that equipment that we'll buy, we'll basically put it at the net cost of the Ford Explorer with having new equipment. Or we could just simply go with the Ford Explorer, pay the $2,000 more, and the old equipment will fit in. So we're kind of, we're out of wash.
What do you want?
Yeah.
Scott, we had a Durango before. How has it performed overall versus the Explorers?
It's performed well. It has 138,000 miles on it. Haven't had any major issues with it.
Are they different?
I don't know where I stand as far as making comments on this. Totally different vehicle from what your 2008 was. A totally redesigned vehicle. It's more really equivalent to the Ford Explorers, so.
Yeah, I believe that Chrysler is trying to make a presence in the fleet, police vehicle fleet again, besides just the Dodge Charger. I just read an article yesterday that most police agencies are trying to go to the SUVs because of the all-wheel drive, the, you know, storage of equipment, just a little bit more roomier than what a car is. So, you know, for us, yes, we like the Ford Explorers, but we can always give Dodge Durango a try, too. To us, I guess, it's, it's kind of a wash either way, because if we buy the vehicle cheaper, we need to spend that money on equipment. Where if we just roll the equipment from the Ford Explorers over to a new Explorers, we just got to pay the higher cost.
You're going to, you're going to still have to replace equipment for two, right?
For two.
Yep.
What if we propose to do two of one and two of the other, as opposed to four of one?
I think, I think let's just get four of one and move on with it.
Scott, is there a difference in warranty on them?
You okay with that?
Most of the vehicles come with a five-year, 100,000-mile warranty. So mechanically, most time, we just take it to the shop, and they fix it up for us under warranty. So we haven't had any issues regarding mechanical issues.
You know, it makes, makes sense to me. I think, what Beth said, I think, too, if it's, if it's a wash and you got Explorers, but if they are going to work more with us on a program with the Dodges, the subsequent purchases that we make are going to be less money as well. And then if we have to transfer whatever it is we use from them, then we're going to save money down the road as well, if that's what we think will happen.
Sure. And with us, we just want to stay within the parameters of the state law regarding bidding and accepting low bids and that sort of thing. So for us, either vehicle will work, and.
Yeah, my vote would be to go with the Dodge.
Okay, any other, any other questions for Scott? Hearing none, I will look for council action.
Mayor, I will recuse myself from both A and B into this, this conflict of interest.
Okay.
So we are voting on four Dodge Durangos.
Yep, four Dodge Durangos. So I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number B, or letter B, consideration of bids received for the animal control vehicle. And I'll look, let me grab a motion in a second for discussion. Thanks again, Pastor. I'll look for, I got a motion by Mike, second by Beth. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. This is a little bit different story. Again, we advertised for bids on the 10th and 17th, opened the bids on the 23rd. In this case, we only had one bid, and that was for a Dodge Ram three-quarter-ton crew cab pickup that's intended to be used for the animal control officer. And that was, that was the only bid we had. This, of course, is for a brand-new vehicle.
Any questions for Scott on this one?
Yeah, tell me how this is going to be outfitted then with, as a pickup truck for, specifically for animal control use, because I know that the, the purpose of getting a new vehicle was that we needed a solid wall between the animal control officer and any animals that are picked up. So this obviously meets that. But what about the bed of the pickup truck?
Sure.
How are we going to deal with that?
The bed of the pickup will be removed.
Okay.
The cost to order a truck without the box is so minimal amount of difference that we're going to go ahead and order it with the box. And once we get the pickup, we'll remove the box, and there's a aluminum cargo transport box that'll go on it, that'll transport many animals at the same time in separate kennels. And that is going to be on order, like I said, and should be delivered before the pickup's delivered. And, you know, as far as the crew cab, the reason for the crew cab was to keep some of the various tools and gun equipment and so forth that the animal control officer has at his disposal in a warm cab, and keep it temperature-controlled.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Number six, any old business that we need to discuss? Hearing none, I'll move on to number seven, any new business that needs to be discussed.
Anyway, Rob's here. Can we, can I have you come up for a minute, Rob?
Yeah, we're going to bring Rob up anyhow to talk about, we had a lot of confusion about snow gates. People asking questions, and some are saying it's not being used at their house. But I think explain how snow gates really work, will you, Rob?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the snow gates, generally, like I'd said last year, I think when we got our second snow gate, I think I talked a little more in depth about it. But the snow gates are good for up to about six inches of snow. We did have an eight-inch snow this year where we did use them, and they work, but we still have issues with the snow billowing over the top of the moldboard and out the front of the gate. And if you have wet, heavy snow, you really, it's hard to use them. If you have over five, six inches of wet, heavy snow, you can damage the gate, which we've done on the first gate we had. We did do some damage to that quite often. It would get bent from the weight of all that snow. And the other thing that hampers us with the snow gate is, you know, we're trying to keep up a decent speed to get the streets plowed, but the speed of the gate going up and down, it's, it's a hydraulic gate, you know, and the guys try real hard to get every driveway. Occasionally, I think there is some driveways that get missed here and there. But the, the speed of the gate, when these guys are going, they hit the lever to take the gate down, it'll collect. Once it gets all the way down, you still have snow that billows out underneath until the gate is all the way down to the ground. And the new gates that we do have are pretty decent, because they have a spring assembly in them, and a rubber pad on the bottom that helps collect as much snow as possible. But you'll see in some of the driveways, at the very beginning and the very end of a driveway, at times, you'll have, you'll have snow piled up. And of course, once they get past the driveway and the gates all the way up, it'll let all the snow out of the board that's collected for that distance. The longer the distance, of course, you're collecting more snow. It will billow over the top. Like in some of these areas of town where we have driveways that are very close together, it's next to impossible to dump the snow and get the, you know, get the gate up and back down again to collect snow again in a narrow area in between. Say if you have driveways where there's six, eight, 10 feet in between your neighbor's driveway and yours, there's not a lot of area to dump the snow. So you will have snow in the next driveway that billows out into that driveway. So it's not a, it definitely helps take snow away from these people's driveways that they have to clean, but it's, it's not a perfect system, so.
No, I think the misconception is, Rob, that you put a snow gate through my driveway, there shouldn't be any snow. That's not at all correct. There will be snow. There will be a ridge there.
Absolutely. There are, very seldom will you have it where there's, there's next to nothing for snow. I mean, like lately, while in this snow we had here, I would say the average pile of snow in front of your driveway would maybe be eight inches tall. We get a bigger snow event, wet snow, it's tough. You're going to have, you're going to have more snow. There's just nothing you can do with it. So people need to understand that there will be some snow in their driveways, even with the gate being used. And if we do have the, the bigger snow event where, where we can't use the gate, then they'll have to handle more snow like we used to, you know.
And then again, there's thousands of driveways.
Absolutely. That's the other thing is, you know, we're trying our best to get, get done as soon as possible, so people can get around. And there is, there's thousands of driveways to deal with here, and it's, it's, it's a lot of motions. And the guys, when they're doing this, they're going anywhere from six miles an hour, you know, generally, that's about the most consistent speed I've found when I followed the blades, about six miles, miles an hour. There's a lot of things that these guys have to do in there. They're handling a 40-plus-thousand-pound machine. They're trying to watch traffic around them, anything that's going on. Plus, they're trying to focus on mailboxes and driveways. You know, we've been pretty fortunate. We haven't, we haven't had any major incidences. So there's a lot for them to watch. So they do occasionally miss a driveway or something along those lines, and they never mean to, so.
Wasn't the primary use of a snow gate to keep the intersections clean, and driveways are kind of secondary with that, or?
It was never intended for the intersections, but what we have been doing is trying to take what we can out of the intersections, because like this, this snow event, we just finished up with all of our streets today. We didn't have any loaders following today. We had the snow gates pull all their intersections, because it was a low snow. And it works pretty good. When we have more snow, we have to have loaders follow. But with the amount of staff we have, I felt it was more important to put our, our people in trucks to sand, because it was quite icy. So, and we can go back, which we've, we will do, as now we'll spend the rest of the week cleaning up, fine-tuning, cleaning up piles, that type of stuff, cul-de-sac piles. So it's, it does help. We use them in the intersections, too, but it's, you know, when we have a lot of snow, we need to either, you need to back up and hit it two or three times with the snow gate, or have a loader come and hit it once as he follows, put it up on the, the corner, and keep moving, so.
Rob, will you touch on Uptown for me? Because I still struggle with the Uptown. You send out your, your announcements, you know, that says you're going to clean it up, and then doggone it, we clean up the Uptown, and then I drive through, and that's when they're pushing the snow out into the road. How do we, how do we fix that? What do we do? Do we wait an extra day, so everybody gets their sidewalks shoveled, or do we have something that maybe we need to hire somebody that goes out and shovels the ones that aren't, aren't done, and then we just bill it to the owner? What do we do?
You know, that's, that's the thing.
Because you're going twice, if I'm not mistaken. You'll go again now down there and do some work to clean up what they shoveled out the sidewalk.
Right. What we'll try to do is go along with loaders as we, as we see, you know, where cars aren't parked, we'll try to catch some of that. But it has been a problem, where we put out an announcement, PSA, that we're going to do Uptown at 3:00 in the morning, and, and we hope that everybody has their sidewalks cleaned before we do that. But what we do find is, there's a large percentage of people that shovel their sidewalks off But what we do find is there's a large percentage of people that shovel their sidewalks off after we've cleaned the whole Uptown. And it is a problem. I don't know what the best way is to handle that. If we wait another day, I know there's going to be a lot of business owners that will be quite upset. And understandably so.
What do other cities do?
What's that?
What do other cities do with that?
You know, I, I don't know, Don. I haven't checked into that and that's something I, I could do definitely.
What's parking been like downtown?
We haven't had too many issues with that.
The police have been going ahead though. I, I got a, a couple of phone calls not too long ago. That's why I asked you to come up was, was a couple of weeks ago when you guys cleaned it. Some people that own properties get calls to have their tenants move. Is, you know, what do we do to educate people? I mean, I had four alerts. Because I'm signed up on the street department, I'm signed up on the police department, and I get them both email and texts. I mean, the alerts are going out there, but what do we got to do better or whatever to educate people to sign up for the alerts, so?
I, I would hope the, the owners of these apartments, you know, would, would inform their people.
Yeah.
I mean, it would help us all. It'd help all the businesses. Because I'm sure there's adjacent business owners that get out and clean their, their sidewalks and, and their neighbor doesn't.
Yeah.
It doesn't look good, you know?
Yeah, I, yeah, I drive downtown every morning after you guys have cleaned and I've seen a lot of the, the sidewalk situation as a mayor speaking of, but.
Right. And, you know, the other issue that I find is, is some of our public parking lots. There's a lot of vehicles that sit in there for weeks, if not months. And it's a problem. Our parking lots are too. I'm not content with how the cleaning of our parking lots go.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
I think though, that's, that's kind of an easy fix. If you've got a, a car that's sitting in that parking lot and it's sat there for a week or whatever, just jerk it out of there.
I think we better check that ordinance because we looked at that one other time. I don't think there is a limit as long as it's licensed.
Then let, let's fix it.
Yeah, then we need to change that.
It's not a, a public parking for months. I mean, it really isn't.
We addressed that a couple of years ago though, but I, I think we need to look at that ordinance though. Because I think as long as it's licensed, it can sit there. According, according to our ordinance.
Rob, are we, when we have people that push their snow out in the street after the fact, is it the same people mostly all the time? Or is it a horse of every color every time?
You know, I, I, I see a handful of them that are the same. I can't say for sure if it's, if it's always that way. I think timing has a lot to do with it. You know, this, this year we've had, we had snowstorms that have been hitting us on the weekends. And I think that's part of it too. When it happens during the week, I think people are more responsive to getting their sidewalks.
Well, they're, they're at their business. A lot of those places aren't open on Sundays. So when you go down there at 3:00 on Monday morning, they haven't been there yet, so. But I mean, that's still not an excuse, put it that way. Because if I push it out, I cleaned my driveway last night. I push it out in the street, then I push it over and push it back into my yard. I couldn't get by with just pushing it out in the street and leaving it after you cleaned.
Well, that's kind of my, what I was going to say Randy is, is, you know, I can see when we put our public service announcement out there and, and if something gets pushed in there afterwards, it should be handled in the same way of anybody else pushing your snow out in the street. They either have to get it hauled away so it's not in the street themselves or they better get it out by the time that, that the plows come by. And I think, you know, doing a warning and eventually if, if somebody warns me and I continue to do it, then I need to get fined. It's just, because there's no pleasing it. There's, there's no fixing it the way it works now. We've heard this for umpteen years. I don't think we've ever had a fix.
And that's maybe what it'll take is, is something like that where you give warnings and then after that, once you start ticketing, people, people will change. Yeah. And, and the cars really haven't been much of an issue now. It's.
But I know the police, I know the police have been going down early though and calling people, which helps. Helps your situation a lot, so.
It helps tremendously.
Good cooperation between the two of you, so.
But on another note, on a positive note, I, I think you had record time that you got the snowfall done. It's just amazing how fast you guys work.
Right. We did, we started at about 20 after 5 on Monday morning. And we finished all streets and alleys and city parking lots by noon today. So it was about 30, 30 and a half hours. And everybody got to go home and sleep a little too, so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob while he's up here?
Are you, I noticed when you guys were moving the snow off 81, are you still using side dumps? I didn't see any that day when I seen them, but.
We, we did use one, just one this time. And we used it uptown this morning too, so.
Okay. You still having a problem getting them in that lot though?
It's the lot shrinking right now. And actually, after the next snow event, we're probably going to have to hire a dozer to push it out, so.
See, I do have a, I do have a comment that we, we need to address. And Council, this is something that I, I would imagine you've gotten a couple of calls. I have. You know, we changed the way that we do Highway 81. We, we bring it into the middle, we pick up the snow immediately and it's gone. In the past, we took it to the sides. And then we waited a few days and then we came out with all our equipment again and spent hours and hours and hours picking it up, sliding it back over onto the street and getting it out of there. Now what's happened is, is that some of the, some of the businesses and homeowners on Highway 81 feel as though that we're taking a service away from them because now we're not cleaning their sidewalks. So my question to the Council is, do you feel as though we have to go back and clean these people's sidewalks because we've done it in the past? I had one guy call me and say that it's a service that's taken away. I want my taxes reduced now because I'm not paying to.
The reason, the reason we used to take it off there before is because our plows used to put it up there when we plowed the street.
Correct.
That is correct.
That was the only reason we ever cleaned it.
Yeah. But you're going to get phone calls. I just want you to know. And because Jim has been going out and telling people they have to clean their sidewalks. I think we did a PSA, did we not? I think we'll also be sending out letters teaching everyone to let them know that their sidewalks need to be cleaned on the highways.
Actually, I got a call today from someone along 81, very complimentary of the way it's being handled. As well as speaking for some of the neighbors in his area too, that really kudos to the way we're dealing with this year.
That's good to know because I think that was a, that was kind of a tough choice for us there, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was fearful that it was going to be a little tough to make it happen efficiently. And it's actually worked a lot better than I thought it would. And, you know, I, I don't know, let's see, we generally, I time a lot of this stuff to see how long it takes to do this. But I think we had 81 cleared in under four hours this last time, which was, that's two miles.
That's curb to curb and all picked up.
All picked up and it's gone. So that's, that's pretty good, two miles.
And it would have taken you double that.
It would have taken a lot longer. When we pull it off the curb lines and the sidewalks. And we do have to do that, like on Highway 212 and 20 occasionally to make more storage for snow on the edges. But it, it's time-consuming because you're running more equipment to get it to the center. It's a lot slower that way. Or not to the center, but to where we can at least pick it up. This is more efficient is what I'm finding. Takes a little bit less equipment to, to get it all to happen, so.
Isn't it, isn't the reconstruction of 212 going to include sidewalks on both sides all the way? So we're going to end up being in the same scenario once 212 is done.
Yeah.
Is what we have in a lot of areas on 81. But Mayor, I agree with you that it's a service because we put it there. It's not a service because of what they're paying in their taxes or, or, you know, I don't think when they come around and determine our property taxes, they ask us whether we have, we have to shovel our sidewalks or not. You know, it, it's one of those things. We put it there, we take it off. And if we're not putting it there, which it really is a, it sounds like a much more efficient way for us, then they fall into the same category that everybody else that has a sidewalk has, so.
Well, this works better for even driveways. Because they're getting way less snow. In the past, you put it all into the driveway, yeah.
Because we're pulling it from the, the gutter out to the center, so. It is, it's a lot cleaner for them. They have less to deal with.
I just have one more, one more thing I wanted to mention is with the opening of Hobby Lobby, there's just tons of cars out there. And it's a little bit difficult the way that the in and out, you know, on that particular street on Willow Creek Drive. As you remember, you're coming down from, from the south, it's a right in and a right out. We had people jumping the curves over there and they weren't too happy about that.
Yeah, we, we did end up putting a temporary no-left-turn sign in, in the island out there. Because people were trying to go to the south and jumping over the, the median or the island. And they, I think they just thought it was snow that wasn't plowed or something like that, but. So we put a sign up there. We'll, we'll put something permanent up there.
Got to get into my Hobby Lobby. I got a night job by the way, because of, to support my wife's Hobby Lobby.
Mayor, if I could make one more comment on snow removal, and I'd sent you an email the other day about it. But I think one thing we have to watch right now is the piles of snow on corners. And where I really noticed, it really wasn't so much with the work that your crew's been doing. But with the businesses that are piling snow in the corners of their parking lots, it's really hard on some of these corners to see. And when we've had the road conditions that we've had, it's very dangerous. You, you can't see. And, and that's, I've also noticed it not only on intersection corners, but on the sides of where their, their entrances are. And so we, we, I don't know whose job that is to look at that. You know, yours is, I'm assuming on the corners, if it's, we're placing it there and.
When we put it there, we try to go back whenever there's calls or complaints or if we see it's getting high enough, we'll go back and we will haul corners out.
In our Tuesday meeting, Jim was already, we had talked to Jim about it. The, you know, the guy that takes care of all that for us, the code enforcer. He, he's going to be going around and talking to these folks, say you've got to move that snow out of here.
Justin, maybe you can answer this. Isn't that some liability to the business owner if he blocks view of an intersection or?
I mean, arguably, yes. You know, the city, in ordinance, you have the requirement that as the owner occupier of a piece of property, that it is your responsibility for all adjacent sidewalks to be cleared of snow and ice. So once there's a law on the books that establishes a duty and that duty wasn't met, obviously, by there being an obstruction of view as a result of snow being piled on the sidewalk, that that owner occupant should have taken off, then that arguably establishes a per se liability with the landowner.
Thanks, Rob.
Steve, can I just, one more quick item? It didn't come up in conversation, but the question I've heard is who gets a snow gate and who doesn't? Just clarify that not every truck's got one and our, our subcontractors don't necessarily have them either.
Correct. The, right now we have three snow gates. And what we've tried to do is cover, you know, the main portion of town, which is 14th Avenue down to 212, west to 21st Street and east to 19th. Now, what we have done, I've had my teams catch all the River Ridge, North Ridge, Eastwoods, Dakota Commons, and Kemp Place over there. We have collected that this whole winter. The problem I have is I, I do, well, it's not a problem. I, I have some other contractors that are willing to work for us with their motor graders, but they don't have snow gates. And they have four-wheel-drive motor graders and snow gates just won't work on that. They won't pull them when you get heavier snow. So we could speed up the process a little bit more, but I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place because now I want a snow gate for everybody I can, but I don't want to take that away from them either. So that's created another concern. But that's where we're at right now. And I, I'm assuming in time, you know, we're going to continue to try to improve on this.
So the biggest deal is the private contractors, where we have private contractors removing snow that.
Right. They, none of them have snow gates at all, so.
Most of them don't even have six-wheel drive where they're capable of using a snow gate.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
I got one other quick question. Do we have a plan for picking up branches, limbs that are down from the ice storm?
We have been out doing as much as we can there. Anything that was out in the street, of course, we've been collecting those as we go and, and that.
Because I know up in my neighborhood, there's quite a few piles out on the street corners or out along the curb, some pretty good-sized branches.
And I don't know, maybe, is Jay still here? I don't know, forestry, Jay, they.
They've taken care of some of the bigger stuff.
I know we've been working on it too and I, and I'm, I'm sure forestry's been working on it too, so.
Yeah, we've been out and gotten some of the bigger stuff, the downed branches. But the, the twigs and small branches, we haven't really been doing much with to this point in time.
Because there's quite a few piles up on the north end of town around, you know, Mallett School area and whatnot. People have piled out of the curb.
One of the, one of the things we could do, John, because they're not big trees or anything like that, we could probably clean out where they have the, the drop-off for, for leaves and stuff. And just tell them to bring them down there and drop them off and we can get rid of them.
There's some pretty good-sized limbs on a lot of these.
A lot of those small ones are going to have to wait till spring because these guys, you know, with the snow, it's tough. It's tough. They, you just don't have time.
Right. On down days, you know, we've, we have sent guys out and we've been working on it, but there's still more out there.
Is that something maybe we can talk with Mike about and, and see if that can be added into the citywide cleanup in the spring?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. But you're right. We, we'll, we'll keep working on it, keep plugging away when you guys get time. Try to pick some up.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to touch base with you Scotty one more time if you could. Anything new on the, on the stop ambush is what I was getting at. Have they showed up? Have you guys installed anything yet?
Yes, we do have the one that we agreed to test and we did an installation on that. We're working through some points, issues that we've had with it, with the company, the manufacturer. Hopefully, some of those issues can be resolved and, and give us a test period for a month or so with that particular vehicle. And if everything works as we hope it would, maybe we can proceed and get some more. But at this point in time, we did the installation. We just had a few problems that arose that we're trying to sort through at this moment.
Good. Yeah, because when you get it done, I'd like to, I'd like to see how they work. I think we all kind of would.
Sure.
Be very, very interesting.
Yep.
Perfect. Well, thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Any other new business, guys, that we have missed? Any lays on member reports? Any need to go into executive session? If not, I will look for a motion of second to adjourn. Motion by Randy, second by Glenn. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.